Can you identify yourself? 303-569-2952.
You don't know it by now, Jesus, come on now. Hello.
Okay, thank you.
You're more than welcome.
The computer doesn't remember the numbers.
The computer does a lot of things that it shouldn't do and does do some things it should do.
And you're expecting us to recognize your voice?
Yes. You're not a computer, you're not a bunch of chips and relays and whatever the hell else electronic inheritors of this planet are. Utilize neurological function.
Hi, somebody else just phoned in. 720-280-6159. Who's that?
That's Frank.
Okay.
That's Frank.
Okay.
Me and Kelsey are here.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, Sasha.
He looks so ecstatic, Chris.
I'm just tired.
Yeah, we have jackets. It's the cool kids' club.
I don't know how you do it with three kids running around. Four.
Four.
Um, yeah, don't ask them how I do it. I'd probably get in trouble with your mom.
She has her challenges too.
Should watch her at melodrama rehearsals. She keeps them in line. On, in focus, online or online and in focus. It's just, it's a joy to watch good parenting. Thank you.
Thanks, Marty. Um, I know we're not totally started yet, but did everybody get, um, my email as a member of public?
Yes.
Affirmative. The Waterline email, correct?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, got it.
Cool.
Kathy, how you doing?
Oh, Marty, don't sigh so loud in my ear.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There was a time many, many decades ago when women would beg me to do that, but no longer.
I wasn't born, so...
I know.
Marty, Marty, be, be, be real now. Be truthful.
Nobody ever wanted to do that.
Well, I said many, many decades ago.
Even then.
Back when I was a minor, a mucker and a mean, you know what?
Gosh darn, mucker?
Strong word, Sarah.
And a mean, quick to pucker. How you like that, sucker? You better get this meeting started sooner. It's all downhill from here on this end.
Oh, he's smoking like a true mucker.
Hey Frank, you were right about the roots. It looks like there's water coming up around them on the northeast side of the tree.
Okay, I will come down sometime this week.
Yeah, and Donald Trump is gonna get a test for everyone. Jeez. You know, you and him have, you've got a little more credibility than him on this tree thing.
Why, thank you.
You're qualified to give advice where he is unqualified to do anything. Even comb his hair.
Let's digress.
Well, yes, let's not go there anymore. I don't want to.
Bye. Well, it's an evergreen tree, so I'm gonna take a bow.
I should've kept going then.
So, so Chris, I gotta tell you quick before we get going here. Um, I had a wonderful girl dog who was in heat and, um, I was home with my sister Kate. Her parents were out and, um, this bulldog, I could've called it, I could call it a pit bull, came and stuck his nose right, right against, uh, we had, um, French doors. And, and he was big and he pressed his nose against the glass and I smacked it and the, the glass broke. We were terrified. Oh, God. Um, anyway, her, her pheromones went through the glass and everything else.
We've had every dog in town that's got its balls left at our house about every night.
Even the ones who don't will come and visit. They have wishful thinking and memories.
Hey, Sam.
Are we ready to get started?
Oh, boy.
Yeah, that's not gonna work.
Sam, is that you?
Yeah.
Huh?
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Try that. You're cutting out really bad, Sam.
Give him a minute.
I think he said, "Give him a minute to reconnect."
Miss Sarah, can't, Miss Tammy?
Yeah.
Did ev- did everyone get the bills?
I got the bills.
Yes, I got them.
I got them.
The bills.
All right, I'm looking for them.
I got them.
I got the, uh, minutes. I got, there's meetings set up, obviously. I got the agenda, but I do not see the bills.
We can read them off.
Okay, then. Would you be so kind as to do that when the appropriate? I know, that's what I was gonna say, when the appropriate hour arrives to do that. And Tammy, thank you for dropping this stuff off since it didn't come by email.
You're very welcome. Sorry, I forgot your bills.
It's, it's fine. It's just fine.
It's a short list.
Uh-huh.
My computer has said, "Updating. Don't turn off your computer for over an hour." So I'm joining you on the telephone.
It's the best way. You can make obscene gestures at people and no one knows. You know, you can take it to the bathroom with you and no one knows.
Oh, dear.
It's good, the phone is great. Otherwise, you know, they're just snooping in our business, them other board members.
To keep the cat off of the keyboard, anyway.
Yeah.
For a new computer, it sure does have to update quite often.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, speaking of computers, where are we with this Chrome device purchase thing?
They're all here and they are getting set up. I'm almost through, I'm halfway through setting all of them up. We had two come in that had, um, uh, a bad battery, so those are getting replaced. Regardless, there should be enough for everybody that needs one, um, to use them. They should be set up next week, this week, sorry, not next week.
Super, Tim, Tay. Hey, Sam.
Great.
How are you doing, Sam?
I'm, I'm more than I...
Oh, boy, we cannot hear you well at all.
Okay, hang on just a second.
Hey, Marty, we can hear your heavy breathing.
Well, yeah, you know, you had emphysema, were 75 years old, COPD, worked in a grocery store,
mute yourself.
heated with wood, smoked for 50 years, and worked underground for 12. We could hear your breath too there.
Mute yourself.
He can't, he's on the phone.
I can mute myself on my phone.
He has a flip phone. He doesn't have a smartphone.
And my flip phone, and it's not the only one, but Verizon has been hired by some political entity that shall remain nameless to keep me off the, whatever it's called. It won't let me make phone calls or it screws with it. So this is a landline.
Is that working any better?
No, Sam, that's bad. How about the phone? Or, Sam, maybe get on the phone and put yourself on mute in the, um, video, so you're still video here, but you're better audio.
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Okay, try that again.
Can you hear me now?
Sam, you're still cutting out. It's better, but you're still cutting out. Do you see the, the call-in number? You wanna try that instead?
Since no one can see me raising my hand, this will be a signal that I'm raising my hand.
Oh, God, no, that hurts. Sorry.
Oh, whoops, I hit the mute button by accident.
Yeah, I promise.
That's terrible. Sorry, Sam.
Yeah, I'm gonna s-
Sam, are you, uh, Sasha, are you texting it to him?
I already did text it to him, so he might not, so I'm not sure.
Thanks, too.
I tried to put it in the group chat and my chat closed.
Yeah, I can't use the group chat for some reason. Hey, Kathy?
Hi.
Hey, um, special thoughts for your mom. How's she doing?
Uh, not so great.
Oh, dear. Good, it's good to see you.
I wanna know why Kathy's got that beautiful sunset behind her. I can't see it over my window.
It says-
What does it say?
It's an Arvada thing. My wall is ugly.
So, so you guys, I'm thinking if, I'm sure Sam is gonna get on pretty quick, um, but I wonder if we should start, start with a roll call and get things rolling. What, what do you think, you guys?
I agree.
Yeah, me.
Sarah, Mayor Pro Tem here, Sarah Whalen, and it looks to me like we have eight participants on the line, so we've got Tay, Graham, Sasha, Frank, Kathy Gibbs, Tammy, Sam. Ooh, Sam is with us, Marty, Chris, and Sam. Uh, we were just- ooh, Sam is with us, Marty, Chris, and Sam. Uh, we were just starting up. You wanna kick in there?
Can you hear me?
Better.
Is it any better?
It's, it's still quirky, but it's better.
I don't understand what's going on. I've been in four different meetings today with this computer sitting right here and it's been fine. I don't know why it's messing up now.
Well, what, wanna just forge ahead, Sam? Um, we just took the roll call and...
Okay.
I'll hand it over to you.
All right. Why don't you continue on for just a minute? Let me see if I can call in. Now that I got the median ID and everything, maybe I can call in.
Well, Sam, you're sounding good now.
You're sounding good.
Okay. All right. Then... Let's see. Let's after the roll call. Let me bring the agenda up here or something shit.
You want me to change what we...
Ah, there.
There we go. Um...
Sam, we do not have an application from Aquina. We can take them off.
Okay.
What was that, Sam?
Hello? Is the agenda been approved yet?
No, not yet.
Have you approved the agenda yet?
No.
Okay. Anybody have anything to add? Okay. Somebody move to approve the agenda.
I've moved to approve the agenda.
Sarah, seconds with the modifications suggested by Tammy.
Okay. All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Okay. Um... Any public comment?
I have public comment.
Okay.
Um, as far as our, the posted agendas, they have an item on the bottom where it says the meeting, um, is available online and what have you. I, I, I do think in order for us to appropriately have our meetings not in the office, the location of that should be on the public posted agenda, not, not just a suggestion to contact. And it would also probably help with some of these issues if we did have that information right on the agenda when anybody else calls in if they happen to be out of town and missing a meeting and phoning in.
I agree.
I agree.
Hello?
Yeah?
The Zoom meeting notice is posted at the post office and at the agenda, with, with the agenda on the town hall door. So that information is posted with the agenda. It just doesn't all fit on one page.
Okay. I don't see it on our, on the agenda that we got emailed. That's why I was concerned.
I just sent the, I sent the Zoom meeting up with the agenda. I figured if I made the print any smaller, you wouldn't be able to read it.
Does the agenda have to be on one page?
No.
Anyway, that's my comment and suggestion.
I, I would, I would just say, yeah, Tammy, that'd be great. As, as a rule, Meridian does that as a rule. They include the call-in information, some information on all of their agendas. Not that, that means we need to, but it's standard practice elsewhere as well.
There...
I agree.
There's, there would potentially be an issue if something happened during this time and somebody said, "Well, I didn't see the public, the Zoom meeting information on any of the agendas." And then we go back and we have this agenda filed that's not on here.
Well, rather than attaching the entire page, I just put the meeting information at the bottom and I taped it to the agenda, and so it's visible on the window and it's visible at the post office. So I can leave the whole entire email.
I think as long as we're done, as long as we're done, um, our meetings online, I think it needs to be at the top of the agenda where everybody can see it, and then you gotta move some of the other stuff under another page. That's pretty important that we have that listed where everybody can see it. So I think you oughta add that right, right at the top of the agenda.
So you want the Zoom meeting notice on the top of the agenda? Is that correct?
That's what I heard, Tim.
All right, um, right under Town Board of Charlie Meeting, right under Town, Town Board of Crested Meeting, the next line should be the Zoom meeting notice.
With all the information to access the Zoom meeting?
It would probably fit if you slide the seven o'clock PM into the same font along the same line as Monday, May eleventh, twenty twenty, seven o'clock PM, and then you'll have another line to put the, the Zoom meeting information somewhere on the agenda.
Thank you. I'll...
Needs to be a...
I'll figure it out.
Yeah.
I have a question about what that includes.
You guys, I can send along an example of a Meridian agenda which has this Sam's format exactly. So I'll send it along and, Tammy, you can modify it based upon what our needs are, if you think it works.
That sounds good.
Is that all right with you, Tay?
Uh, yeah. I can condense it so you have, you have it at the same reusable, um, text every time and you just have to change.
That's okay. I will try to figure it out with the, put the notice on there and amend the form we have.
All right. Let's pay the bills.
I've moved to approve the bills as presented.
Um, I have a question about the bills, please.
Okay.
Um, why is there an asterisk next to the, um, what I assume is the Chromebook, but then there's no explanation for the asterisk?
The asterisk is on there because it was a debit card charge and I got in a hurry and I didn't put the debit card asterisk note at the bottom, so I apologize.
Okay. That's all I was wondering. I'll second.
Who is that?
Sasha.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All in favor?
I recuse myself since I got a bill on there, I assume, since I submitted it.
All right. Motion carried. Um...
Marty, you're up. Signage at Silver and Main Street.
Yeah, very simple. Now that the hordes are gonna descend upon our mountain town by misinterpreting what they're supposed to do, I would like to get those no parking signs in in as much an efficacious manner as possible, and that is also a request upon the, uh, head of the fire authority due to knuckleheads limiting access to emergency services to our citizens or if they need to, if somebody has a stroke up on Silver Street, they're fucked.
Any more comments? We're, we're working on getting, getting signs and getting it done. Um, Tay's been sick the last few weeks, so we haven't got as much accomplished as I hoped to, but it's one of our top priorities. As soon as we can get out and get things done, it'll be done.
Um, I have a question about that also, particularly because I live there now. Um, I was told before I was at those signs were here, we just weren't able to put them in yet.
Um... I'm not sure, Tay, are, are those signs here, the ones that we need to present?
Yeah, we have, we have a lot of the no parking signs here. The ones that weren't able to be put in yet were the ones that needed posted, post holes dug.
The post holes have been dug in front of eight-eight-eight Main Street, as well as the KP building.
Yeah, I dug those ones, correct. Those two, yeah. Those are actually specialized signs that, um, the Plume, the KP building, the people that own that building actually put in money to have, uh, to purchase signs that didn't look ugly, but also conform to code, so they'll be put in.
I don't understand how that affects the opposite side of Main Street.
Which opposite?
As we've, the eight-eight-eight Main Street side. As we add a no parking here to corner sign.
Yeah, they're gonna be matching signs. The two signs will be matching.
So it, it appears as though we're waiting for those signs to arrive before they are installed.
Those two, yes. The, the post holes are in for those, but those two signs are, are different.
Tay, Tay, do you have a, an idea on timeline?
Um, I actually don't, I'm sorry. I mean, it should be within the next couple of weeks, but I don't have a specific big time. You want me to put a temporary sign on in front of the, the opposite side so you have it for now?
I, I have one question and then, yes, I would like a sign there also. Um, I, I'm struggling with that, uh, private business is dictating signage on public streets.
Absolutely. I, too. Here, here.
They weren't dictating sign. They didn't dictate anything. I actually spoke with Lee about it last year and we had talked about getting something that wasn't ugly just to keep kind of the personality of Silver, Silver Plume in that little area where the, where most people come in and park and, and see it. And so that was...
And I...
...here and, and we started on that, but didn't finish because we only got the post holes dug for it.
So it's been over a year of no signage is kind of my issue.
Hello? Hello? Can Tammy say something real quick? There were signs that said, "No parking here to corner." They were yellow and black on both sides of the street and they had been put in by Rickabots to observe the parking and turning radius for the fire trucks and the large vehicles. When we did the sewer mains up there by the post office and by the Catholic Church, the contractor removed the signs and the posts were rotted, and so we ordered new red and white reflective signs that say, "No parking here to corner." So we've actually been without signage since about the end of summer two thousand sixteen. The contractor did not put them back and we really, really need to put them back up because there are a lot of times people park there not knowing that we need that corner to make the corner and the post office guy and the delivery trucks cannot get around the corner sometimes. So Kelly Babian asked if we were going to please get those up. She has asked about every three months since we took them down. So when Tay was on leave of absence in October, we ordered two signs for the corner each side of the street. And I know that the holes went in last fall. So if at all possible, it would be a good thing for public safety if we could please get the signs back in.
The signs will be put back in as soon as we possibly can. I'm playing a little catch-up here. Um, a lot of things have been left hanging and I'm, I'm working on it. I'm working with Tay to try and get this stuff done. Give me a chance to get caught up a little bit. It will be done as soon as we can possibly get it done.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that and understand that I have a question as to why private businesses are having input into the aesthetics and analyzing the perception of the town without consulting
We did not have input.
other residents. And, you know, I may be overstating it.
Yeah.
Or maybe it was overstated
That is an overstatement.
at first. Well, also, that's what, that statement led me to believe that, so if there could be a clarification, is Brian making a fiduciary, uh, contribution and really nothing more? And the whole concept of deciding what fits in with Silver Plume should be something that, at least out of respect for them, the resident should have a little bit of say in. So that's, that's the comment that I got.
Yeah, I, I can't speak to that. It was done before, um, before I was in this position, um, I would get it done with...
Hey, Sam?
All right.
Yeah?
Yeah.
That, that sounds great. You're, you're not coming through particularly clear, and I wonder if it would be worthwhile calling in.
Um...
Sorry, you guys, I just think it's worthwhile. Um...
Absolutely.
I do, too.
Yeah, okay.
I can't understand him at all.
Okay, all right.
Well, that's the way he talks normally.
That's right. That's right. (laughing) Yeah, my two cents worth on this is, um, you know, urgency to get it done, particularly signage that, um, will facilitate safe navigating in the town. Uh, but I also don't think we wanna reinvent the wheel and Sasha, I, I appreciate, and Marty, appreciate your observations. Uh, we can either just totally undo what was done before Sam became mayor or just proceed with what Tay and Lee discussed and what the plans were in this particular circumstance. I personally don't feel strongly, I'd rather see the signs put up. I don't really care what signs they are.
I only care in the sense of the timeframe.
Yeah, okay.
I think if we have red and white signs... If we have red and white signs available right now, they need to go up, and then if Brian wants to present something to the town of changing those signs once he has an idea of what he wants to put there and when they're gonna be there, maybe.
Yeah, and Chris, I don't...
Well said.
Yeah, I don't think that was the, the circumstance, though, Chris, just to be clear. I think, I think Lee and Tay, um, felt that, that these would be signs designed that, in a way that was more compatible with the character of that part of town. I don't think it had anything to do with, you know...
I, I have, I have no issue with design, just availability.
Yeah.
I think Tammy already said that we have the red and white signs already. That's why I brought it up.
Yeah, and, and that's, yeah, Chris, I totally get it. It was, um, multiple overlapping efforts, um, and I don't think the board needs to spend a lot more time other than the urgency of putting the signs up, is my opinion.
The way I understood it, that we have the signs already sitting at the shop. I was saying we should put them up for the time being. That's all I was getting at.
Yeah, I got you.
I agree with that.
Hey, Sam, are you back yet?
Okay, Josh, if there's actually a glass of wine.
I don't know what's going on with the internet or my phone. I can't get the phone to work and obviously the internet's not working very good. The computer says it's got a strong signal.
Sam, can we just?
Can you hear me?
We can hea- uh, well, we can hear you, hear you. Um, it's, it's painful, but you get through, so why don't you just continue the way you are?
Alright. Let me move over here closer to the modem, maybe that helps. Is that any better? Can you hear me any better now?
Yes, I can.
Hello?
Yes.
Now I can't hear any of you.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Alright, well, we'll try and go on. Um, the next thing is uh COVID nineteen update. This is gonna be hard if you're having a hard time hearing me. I'm on a, the committee for the county to set the, set policy for trying to reopen the county. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, this is gonna be tough. Give me, give me just a minute. I'm gonna try it with computers. I'll try and get back information in just a minute, I'm gonna go to another computer.
Okay.
You can try your phone too, your smartphone, and just do the video through that.
I think he said his phone wasn't working either.
Yeah, and it looks like he's gone already. I see Sasha's note, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, and my, I'm happy to read through Sasha, but I don't know, um, I, I don't know much about the COVID nineteen update, so I, Sam's the one with the information.
Can we skip to the town ordinances and then go back to the COVID?
We need to approve, let's see. Yeah, we can.
I move that we do that.
Me too.
Okay, okay, um. Tay, can you scoot us? Scoot us along to that, so.
Are you comfortable, Sarah, because it does say Sam, but you're comfortable doing that?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. So, so this is number three, town ordinances. Um, Sam certainly can provide additional detail, thanks Tay, that's great. Um, essentially, um, we have an effort underway to help Tammy with locating the ordinances. And Tammy has indicated, and Tammy, correct me if I'm wrong, indicated to Sam that she's already got a, a good um step up on doing this, but the reality is our ordinances are not all in one place. And the aim for us is to gather them together, do a, an assessment of what ordinances we have, compile them, and ultimately put them in a um electronically and readily available set of ordinance, ordinances. Um, and we are able to take advantage, I think, of, pardon me, potential funding to do this, and um Rick Caldwell has offered to help us with um making the arrangements to um appropriately compile the ordinances and um get funding in order to do that in uh an effective way. Uh, I'm not entirely sure what we're referring to by recommended changes to the way we approve new orden, ordinances, but that's something that Sam can maybe provide additional information on. Tammy, is that something that you have an understanding about?
It is, if I could just, uh, I could give you a little bit of background too on what we need to do. With regard to adopting ordinances, the state statutes change all the time. So they're first and second reading, and after first reading you have changes, so you have to publish in the paper. You've adopted to publish by uh title only when you pa- when you pass an ordinance. So if we can pass them with one reading, like you do an emergency ordinance, that saves on uh paperwork and publishing, of course. On the other hand, what we really need to do, um, those of you that are familiar with the land use code, that's a codification on a small scale of your building and zoning regulations into what they call a code. So essentially, what we want to do is codify your existing ordinances so that you can look them up by section and topic, because now what you have is just a succession of documents that were adopted and approved over the years, and I think in many cases, the municipalities will purge their obsolete ordinances. And that may be what's happened to a number of the first series of ordinances, but the most requested ordinances you have pertain to your water and sewer system. There are your land use code with the zoning map, and the newer ordinances that you've, like the marijuana ordinance and the taxing ordinances that you've passed in the last twenty years or so. Those are all available electronically now, and on the old website, you were simply instructed to give, uh, you know, to contact the town clerk. And then we would provide a copy to you or tell you where to look.
Right, right.
So it would be so much easier for both the town attorneys, myself, and you as a board to be able, you know, when somebody comes to you and says, can I do this on my property? It's pretty easy to look it up in the land use code, because we took nine ordinances and had them codified into a code that you can have a table of contents, and you can look things up by topic. And it makes it a lot easier uh for people that are seeking specific information. Our municipal code is codified.
Got it. So Tammy, what, what we will ultimately have then is um a, a, a larger body of work that includes all of the ordinances, but they will be obtainable in a similarly convenient way to that which you just described, and, and uh I, I want to say real quick, I know Sasha has her hand up. Sash, do you want to add in?
Pick me, pick me. Um, I, I just had a question, um, if part of the town ordinances work um has to do with some of the things that um TJ Delubak brought to the board as far as town planning, or if these are separate?
Good question. Um, and I was chatting with Sam about that just before we got on the line, and uh I believe, Tammy, that Sam talked with you about your ideas for potential funding for that, and he also talked about this with TJ, who is, is on it, Sasha, I think. He's adding that to his list of things for which might help us obtain funding. Whether it explicitly connects with um uh town planning, are you talking about um like developing our, or updating our twenty-year town planning document, or what is that called?
Um, my, my thought was just, if this is something that can be included in the things that are part of his wheelhouse.
Yes, so the answer is yes.
Use him to his
Yeah.
maximum potential for our purpose.
Yeah, I, I think Sam's trying to do that.
Okay, cool, that was off.
Cool. Sam, oh my gosh. Not well.
It's worse, isn't it?
Yep.
Yep.
I don't know what that's going on.
Maybe we need to learn sign language.
That won't work for me.
You probably, probably wouldn't like the sign language I'd put on about now.
Yeah.
Well, I've been in meetings with you, Sam, if you want to come to my house.
Uh, this is, this is Frank, I'd, I'd like to add something to the discussion on the ordinances.
Great.
Uh, I remember maybe ten years ago, at least, uh, what, uh, I can't remember the woman's name, Marshall, what's her first name? She, she, she used to live right by.
Bill and, Bill and Mrs. Marshall.
Uh, well, I think, well, she was for a while, but she got divorced. She lived with Lisa, I, I can't
Pauline.
Anyway, she, she did a, a lot of work to codify the town's ordinances. And she presented it to the town board at the time, and the town board didn't do anything, I know. So as part of this project, it would probably be advantageous to get hold of her to see if she still has the work she had prepared um all those years ago.
Frank, what was Pauline's last name?
Marshall.
Marshall.
I have her phone number if you'd like.
I believe, I believe she pulled those together, uh, we got a, a bundle of them in a binder from Earl Ballard. And so some of the ones I couldn't locate were in the folder, but I may already have that, so I will check and see.
Okay. Great. A quick, that's great, Tammy, and thanks, Frank. Sam, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Good, we're talk, obviously talking about town ordinances, and we've had some good discussion. What did you want to get from this conversation? Did you want to get uh support to move ahead with um the process of locating them? And um, and the recommended change for one instead of two notices? What was your idea on this?
You cut out for a long time, I didn't hear the last of what you said, I'm sorry.
What, what did you want to get from this discussion?
Um, we just need to get the town ordinances all together in someplace where, where they can be found, looked at. Um, as far as I know, nobody actually knows what all of the town ordinances are.
Well, actually, I do, I do have them, they are accessible, and the newer ones are electronic. So when I get a minute, I can put them in a form and give you all a copy of all of the ones I have.
That would be great.
Or we can compile them and get them in a form that we could get them to our town attorney. There are companies that do the codifications, and I know that Barbara Green and Joe Seavy had a couple of names for us.
Yes, Tammy, that was the whole point of this discussion, absolutely, good.
Yes, so we are, if you want a summary, I, I got the message from Sam, and I pulled together what I do have. And if you want to put what we have available on the website, I can have that for Tay uh sometime next week. I would say this week, only we do not have uh everything straightened out with the computers as of yet. So I have a few things in front of that, that I have to get done, and then I will work on the ordinances. I can give you a report at the next meeting.
Hey, Sam?
Hi.
Yeah, let, let's see, Sam, let's see if your phone contribution here works.
Can, can, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can, Sam. Can you guys hear Sam?
Echoes.
It's gonna cause feedback with this.
Yeah, Sam, it's, it's gonna cause feedback.
Does Sam want to maybe try calling that, calling number one more time? I'll put it up on the thing if he can, so he can see it while he's dialing.
Okay, is that any better? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
It's better. Is it good enough to work?
Let's give it a try.
Okay, good, good, good.
Yeah, let's go for it.
Alright. I apologize, I don't know what's going on.
Okay, Sam, I will have an update on gathering of the ordinances by the May twenty-sixth meeting for you, okay?
Okay, that'll work. Um, let's try going back to the COVID nineteen update. Um, I've been on this um policy group for the county, trying to set the policy to be able to reopen the county and, and all that, and I'm, I'm learning a lot through it. Main thing that I'm learning is, this isn't gonna go away anytime soon. Um, we're gonna be under some level of restriction at least through the summer, and probably for the next year. Um, I think we, 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 the town need, need to do a few things to make things work better. Um, I think, if you got the update that I sent out, I, I had some suggestions about stuff that we need, that we should do at the town hall to keep Tammy safe and get town hall back open. Um, it's, it's not good having the town hall closed to the public. Um, but we need to do something to make sure that Tammy's safe and people that are coming in are safe. Did everybody re- read the update that I sent out, the suggestions that I made?
Yep.
Any comments on that?
Yeah.
Do we have anybody in mind that could build the um counter you're talking about? Because that does seem kind of cool, if it's okay with Tammy.
Sounds great.
I'd like us to contact Tim McDonough, maybe. I think he would be the first person to start with, if possible.
Yeah, and then a, a second might be Sean Platt.
I agree with that.
Yep. Yeah, that, that sounds good.
I just want to make sure if Sam designs it and puts it up, but yeah, I think it's a good idea, and we should probably open it up for estimates.
Okay.
Can I uh ask a question? So, uh, roof was uh flying off last year, and this spring we lost quite a few uh rows of our rolled roofing that's right over your records room back there. So I think we better get somebody up there to at least do a roof repair if we're not gonna go ahead and tear it off and replace it. So can I get an estimate from Tim McDonough for getting the sheathing put on with a different kind of roof? Or get some kind of repair on there that's meaningful before we end up having a leak and more damage? And we've also got boardwalk issues with, uh, now we've got holes that are large enough for your foot to go through. I've got a cone on one of them, but they're getting worse as we lose the ice under the boardwalk. Then they're just breaking now and falling in.
So question, can we do this in a cost-effective temporary way? Tammy, you know that we're trying to do all of this with a grant.
Right.
We don't want to do too much, I, I mean, I, I want to address the immediate concerns, and I totally hear what you're saying. Safety on the boardwalk, and um we need the roof to be tight. Um, I'm all for doing short-term, inexpensive measures as long as we're hammering and proceeding with the large-scale budget that hammering and proceeding with the large-scale budget that we've talked about to really do it right. Um, so I don't want to spend too much money that's gonna be totally ripped apart and changed, but at the same time, I, as a board member, I want to address the immediate safety concerns.
Well, I think whether we get a grant or we do it ourselves, uh, that roof's gotta come off, and everybody knows there's really no sheathing under it. So like most of the roof replacements that we have in town, uh, there'll be some expense for putting some OSB or some kind of sheathing on that roof, and right now it's rolled roofing, which is kind of similar to the shake roofs and the asphalt roofs that are being taken off. Uh, Tim McDonough is, uh, the contractor that did your schoolhouse roof and the large town hall. And the asphalt shingles that are supposed to look like, uh, I guess simulated wood shake from a distance are the ones that we did put on large town hall and the fire, uh, Little Jail and the museum. So I guess if you want to look at it that way, we have, you know, an emergency repair, maybe five hundred dollars to get a couple pieces of rolled roofing on there till we decide what to do, but if we went, you know, the other direction, the roof's gotta be replaced one way or the other, and I think the grants are gonna take a little bit more time.
Yes, of course.
And it will probably be fall before they get approved. And if we don't get approved, then we still have.
I had a, I had a conversation with TJ today, um, about the grants, and he's working on a, on a grant for that. But the, I guess from what he said, we kind of left him hanging as to the, the scope of work. He, he needs to know exactly what all we want done with it. Um, the, the last meeting that he was there, that Lee was there, it was mentioned about something with the post office and some with the sidewalks, and he, he's just confused about what the scope of work is. He says if we can do anything to, um, include, um, watershed issues, um, there's a, a grant available, but we have to include something to do with drainage or watershed. Um, so we need to, we need to come up with a scope of work for him, uh, so he can proceed with the grant. He says he's re, ready to send the paperwork in. He just needs to know what to put on it.
Okay, can we do trees and then go for the forest? No offense, Frank, I was waiting on meeting for that.
Right, yes.
I think we need to focus on small town hall.
Absolutely, that's right.
Very, very soon, if we're having these kind of issues with it, so if we do do work here soon, I think maybe like Marty is saying, let's go ahead and do a small one and go up to the small town hall. But in the meantime, we do need to go ahead and approve somebody to do a temporary fix on it, so it doesn't get worse than it is already. Whoever that may be, oh, but we need to.
I, I just have a quick comment. Um, Turner Morris did the roof on the large town hall, not Tim McDonough.
Sorry.
McDonough did the one on the schoolhouse, and it's, uh, rubber, it's old tires, basically, that look like shake shingles, all that one is.
Yeah, I, I am a supporter of what Kristin said, short-term fix with long-term, um, fix of the town hall, uh, in, in mind, so, um, whatever, whatever appropriate next steps we need to take, I'm, I'm supportive of that. Some, something to deal with the immediate roof difficulties and to replace the plank, um, that Tammy is talking about.
I have a motion to that effect, if that's what we need to do.
Sorry, Sam was trying to interject there. Marty, sorry.
Go ahead.
Chris? Chris, can you hear me?
Yes, he can.
Would you be interested in taking, taking this on to, to find some contractor, get some, some bids on what we want done? And get back with me and maybe we should go ahead and authorize the money, uh, a certain amount of money now to where when we do find a, a contractor, we can move ahead with it instead of having to wait for another meeting. Um, what's everybody's thoughts on that?
I would be okay with go ahead and trying to look at a contractor for a short-term fix, and then, um, we can go from there with the scope of work with TJ, and then what we really want to do from there, but yeah, we can start with small steps. I'll start looking for a contractor to do the small fixes on it temporarily for now.
Okay, the temporary fix on the roof and building, uh, the counter inside.
Yeah, I can handle that.
And the outside boardwalk.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll see if we can do something about that temporarily as well.
Yeah.
Sasha, you look like you want.
I'll make three or four boards.
I'd like to hear what Sasha has to say.
Yeah.
Um, I'm happy with authorizing for the, um, COVID nineteen, whatever that is, to take place as soon as we can get somebody in to do it for Tammy. Um, but I feel like any Band-Aids on the roof and the boardwalk, um, needs to be separate. The immediate safety of the office is what we're here talking about right now, and that's what I'm comfortable authorizing without having another meeting.
Meaning the COVID piece, Sash.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would be okay with that, too, and I could just gather up some Band-Aids, and they could be approved at the next meeting. I'd be okay with that.
Okay.
Okay, I have a.
All right. How much do you think we should authorize for, for the, that project, the COVID project?
Yeah, I don't know how to estimate that.
I'm not a carpenter. I don't know.
And I would like to interject something whereby if it rains, if we get a big monsoon, that roof is really precarious. I mean, I, I hate to raise it because it's so prevalent, litigation, someone falls or hurts themselves on the boardwalk, and we loom, the specter of litigation looms. If we do the work in the interior, and then during the monsoon, which can be very heavy, the roof starts to leak and ruins the work that we've done or compromises it, I think it would be necessary to package the town hall.
Marty?
Yes, dear.
I, I feel that the COVID nineteen piece of the interior is not a large enough piece of work to worry about damage from the roof, and that's why I would like it to be kept separate.
Thank you. Yeah, we have.
I think that Tammy's safety and being in the office is what we're talking about right now, and we can talk about the safety of the building separate.
I don't think one precludes the other. I fully agree, let's get the COVID nineteen in, but I think we can make an authorization and prioritize within that authorization that we do the COVID nineteen, but we do not wait to do the roof. You know, we can, we can, roof and boardwalk would be, once that work is completed, and if possible, we can get, get them done at the same time. But I really am, I'm concerned about that roof, and
So.
you know, some people actually run their vehicles over the, that boardwalk.
Yeah, yeah.
I know some guys, man.
We know that.
I know.
So let me ask a specific question. Sasha, you're, you're, um, clear about how you want to differentiate here. It's clear to me that there are people who want to proceed with addressing emergent problems of safety on the boardwalk and the roof. Do you want to propose a way to proceed with those pieces of what we're talking about, which are under the same agenda topic?
What I would propose is that we get a bid for all pieces. But the only piece that we approve to happen before a board meeting are those concerning our town employees' safety during COVID nineteen.
Okay, okay, that's much help, very, very helpful. All right.
I agree with that a hundred percent. That's what I would like.
Get a motion?
So.
If, if it needs to be, I will make that a motion.
Yes, if you would make a motion, and that, Chris, answers what you were trying to do. That's, that sounds good. Sasha, if you would, go ahead.
I move that we get a bid for COVID nineteen safety updates to the small town hall in addition to a bid for roof repairs and board rock repairs. And that we spend the necessary money for employee's safety without a board meeting in between.
And public safety.
No. No.
I'll second that.
Can I make a suggestion for your motion? Um, I think, I think we need to put a, if we're gonna authorize the work to be done before the next board meeting, we need to put a dollar amount on it. Um, can I suggest you put fifteen hundred dollars in, in your motion for the COVID nineteen project?
I'm not comfortable with fifteen hundred dollars for that.
I think it'd be a little more.
Do you think we could get a bid? Should we get a bid by the next meeting, or do you want?
No, it needs to be done before then.
It needs to be done, yes.
Town hall, town hall open as soon as possible.
Yep.
I, I'll do up to fifteen hundred dollars. Anything over than that has to come to the board, and we could do a quick work session meeting or something for that, if it's over that amount.
We could do an emergency meeting if need be. We just need to at least have a quorum available at a certain time, so.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll change my motion to up to fifteen hundred dollars. For the COVID nineteen piece only.
I'll second Sasha's motion.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, did we have, do we have a second?
Yep, Frank's seconded.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion on the subject?
I.
No.
Well, that's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in.
Aye.
No.
Anybody opposed?
Yeah, Marty said.
Yeah. Yeah, just based on the financial, I'd like to see a little more money in there. The concept I fully approve of.
Okey-dokey. All ready.
All right, if, if it comes in to be more than fifteen hundred dollars, I'll call a special meeting, and we'll just meet on the computer and take care of it.
Thank you. That's, that, that, I'll change my vote then as amended to aye, if I can, honey.
All right.
Yes, dear.
Okay, Sam, old business.
Timberline.
Um.
Did everybody go take a look at the trash can?
Yes.
Did you all go see the trash can and the big beautiful poster that Brian Mansour hung on the town hall for you today?
I saw the trash can, and I opened it with my rubber gloves.
So you didn't have any stuff getting in there, Ms. Sarah?
No.
No, it's like a dog collar. It's really easy.
As we give the bear for the class.
You didn't actually go in after you opened it, did you?
Okay, so, so under the COVID nineteen stuff, um, just some informa, for information for, for the board or, um, back to work at, at the railroad and trying to get the locomotive and cars ready to go, and Mark's trying real hard to get the okay to open shooting for around the first of June. His plan is not to open the Silver Plume Depot, um, but to load all, loading unload all passengers down at Devil's Gate. Um, as far as safety of the town from the hordes of people coming up, I think the fact that he's not opening Silver Plume Depot helped that a lot. Um, is there any other concerns, anything that we need to do to prepare for this?
No, I would just ask how much publicity, how much that's going to be. I mean, it really needs to be talked up and put in their literature and their online site for reservations and everything. He sounds like he has his shit together, so I'm assuming he'll do that. Just so people don't wander in for the rail, railroad and breathing on me.
I believe he's got his shit together. I, I don't want to put myself in a, in a position where there's a conflict of interest, because of course he's my employer. Um, so I'm just passing on information. I'm not gonna get real involved in, in that discussion. Um, if you have some specific questions for me about what you got planned, I'll tell you, but, um, first, listen to my opinion. I'm gonna stay out of that.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Sam, this is Frank. I've got a question. Uh, with the, okay, uh, is, if we, if it's not gonna utilize the, uh, Silver Plume Station, is that the reason that the sign that has been knocked down, uh, is not being replaced? You know, the, the large sign that has the parking directions and stuff I noticed has been crushed, uh, and just the hiker sign has been left up? I- is that the reason for that?
I, I don't know when or how that sign got knocked down. There was a discussion about it at the railroad today. Um, our crew just, just started back to work the beginning of, of the week, and our, um, facilities crew is taking care of other things right now. The, the plan is to put the sign back up as soon as they get to it, but right now they're, um, more focused on getting things prepared down at the Devil's Gate Station in case we're allowed to reopen.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, one other thing that I'd, I'd like to discuss under the COVID nineteen is, um, what's everybody's opinion on trying to go back to in-person meetings sometime in the rather near future? Um, I think even under the, the current state order, we could do it. Um, and I've mentioned it to, uh, a couple members of, of the board, and they said that they wasn't comfortable with doing it yet. Um, just kind of opening that for discussion, my, my idea would be to have the board meeting at the small town hall with just board members and employees in person, and the public invited to join by the Zoom meeting. In doing that, we could space ourselves out to meet the social distancing requirements. Um, I'm not, not pushing anybody to, to do it. I'm just throwing it out there for discussion.
I'm not personally comfortable with that. This is Sasha. I live with several at-risk people in my house, and I'm not quite ready for that.
Yeah, I agree with Sasha. I'm not quite ready either.
I agree, too. I'm, I'm an at-risk person.
I agree also.
Sounds like, sounds like it's pretty, pretty unanimous. And I, I, I hate these meetings, especially with what's going on with computers tonight and everything, but I'm willing to continue it as long as everybody wants to, Taylor, what do you want?
Um, the, could, could I just make a suggestion as, as running these? If, if they're, if you are going to stage it and have the meetings close to the public at some point, even after you begin meeting in person, um, we'll need, um, a monitor and a camera. So if you guys want to maybe discuss putting together a budget for that.
We could get a Jumbotron, since we don't have the caboose. How about putting a Jumbotron where the caboose is?
Maybe we just.
And we could rent it, and we could rent it to local advertisers, too, and make money on it.
Okay, well, um, we, we can discuss that, but it don't sound like anybody's interested in doing it anytime soon, so let's put that discussion off till our next meeting, um, just 'cause we still got a lot to cover. Tammy, can you put that on the agenda?
Yes.
Uh, five forty Water Street.
We took that off.
Oh, we took that off, that's right. Um, Timberline update, um, Marty, you want to handle that, or you want me to?
Okay, well, I got it. I'd want to make a request before the next meeting, or as soon as possible, maybe take a picture, since I don't know how to do it, of that, uh, dumpster we looked at, which would help with the, um, construction debris, which I was told today is filled up again, and somehow communicate. If anyone sees it, do not confront the people, but please just take. If anyone sees it, do not confront the people, but please just take down their license plates and let me know. And I would also wanna put the, uh, by order of the town of Silverplume, if we legally can, on those three dumpsters to give it a little more, you know, since they're ignoring it right now, those signs, and they're still dumping their fucking construction trash in there, so.
Let the board know. Not just you, Marty.
Pardon?
Let the board know.
Yeah.
Not just you.
No, just Marty. Yeah, he'll handle it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll coordinate. I've spoken to the sheriff about our legal rights to access their services and I'll fill those in if you want after we talk about the, the, uh, transfer station. Um, and that would help with, and I, you know, I'd be more than happy to assume that. I realize it was presumptuous of me.
Yes.
So. I'd just like to get it dealt with quickly and, you know, that way I'd call the sheriff and tell him, hey.
What about a camera?
I think that's a wonderful idea. Of course, somebody might steal it, but other than that.
Steal the camera? That's kinda funny.
Yeah, and, or they throw it in the dumpster. One of the two.
They'll only steal it if you put toilet paper by it.
I mean.
I mean, as far as a camera, I don't disagree with the idea and there's plenty of ways to do it where nobody would see it to steal it.
Yeah, and, and we have a resident relative of an expert on how to do it, you know? I'm sure you.
Chris, you never told me.
Um, so they are, as you saw, the can out in front of the town hall, excuse me, I'm trying to light myself on fire. Um, the can on the small, in front of the town hall and, uh, they originally wanted to lease it to individuals at fifteen bucks a month, which would require them to set up an account and go through some hoops. And Sam came up with the concept that they would have to go to the, the hoo-has with and we would have to, you know, come to our own anointed hoo-has and that we would forego, um, s- the increase in, uh, our, the rates, their, their FIFs, that, our FIFdom fees. Um, if they would just make those available to citizens. So we wouldn't raise the tonnage rates if they would accommodate the citizens of the town, uh, from paying that fifteen bucks a pop.
Did they ever tell you exactly how much each can costs, like just one can, how much it costs?
I don't recall. Did, do you recall, Sam?
Um, I don't know, I don't know that it was that bear can, but he did say, um, that a can was about eighty dollars apiece.
So one thing that I wouldn't be against maybe is, as the town, if it's like eighty dollars apiece, maybe we can go ahead and pursue a grant or maybe just buy them outright as a pound and, and push them out and the people can pay the town back or we just give them whatever we decide we wanna do on that sense. But I think messing with Timberline further on of them trying to give us bear cans, I don't think it's gonna pan out too well, but they really don't have to do anything. They probably really being a new company, not being Larry anymore, would probably love to get us all under an account 'cause they don't wanna provide us with free trash anymore, I'm sure of that.
Well, he was agree, he was kind of agreeable to that. I just, that was one of the proposals we came up with and, and certainly whatever the board wanted to do, it would be fine. It just seems to minimize or it makes it, the easier it makes for bipedal mammals to accomplish a noble chore, the more likely it is to get them to actually do it. So I figure if, and they say, here, just call them, get your can, and you're, you're out of it.
I mean, maybe the town just buys all the cans out, we get them out to the people and charge them a little bit extra on their water bill or something. I don't know. It's something to think about.
Yeah, well, originally that's what I thought, is that we would buy them and then lease them to the citizens of the town, but I think there's enough uh, in terms of monitoring stuff, we, you know, we have the water bill, I mean, with the new computer system and everything, I'd like to minimize, I'd like to streamline it as much as possible. Is, do you feel that way, Sam?
Yeah, um, if, if Timberline isn't gonna go ahead and, and do that, if, if they don't agree to it, then yeah, I agree with Chris that that, that would be the avenue to take, but if we can get Timberline to provide them, I think that would be the better way to go.
And I agree with that, I really do. And one thing we can possibly do is the town has to end up buying them and handing them out to the citizens. We can make it an ordinance that the trash doesn't get picked up unless it's been a bear can. So it makes people forced to use this bear can, you know, if we really don't have a way to enforce anything anyways, and we don't have a cop about there to write a ticket if you're not using a bear can, but if you wanna use the free trash service that Timberline provides, you have to use a bear can. It, I don't know.
Yeah, for edibles, you know, or something.
Yeah, we can do, we can do something like that.
Yeah, but let's see if they go along, let's see if they go along for purposes of streamlining the meeting too. Let's see if they agree and we agree. If they do that, then that's okay with the board. That's the first thing I'd like to do. And I realize we would have to so, figure out what we would be willing to do in terms of uh, not raising the rate, the timing and the, uh, the timing of it primarily, so.
Uh, this is Frank. I'd like to make a, some, the, the comments here. Uh.
Good day, Frank.
Okay, okay. The, um, the situation with the bears is a natural situation that exists in the town. Uh, the fact that Timberline has provided individual trash cans in, uh, some places. Uh, the, um, I think we should read the responsibility, the overall thing, I think it should be the responsibility of Timberline to provide bear-proof containers as part of what they owe the town for letting, for us letting them be here. Uh, if, if we can't talk Timberline into doing that, I would suggest, as we said earlier, that the town purchase the bear-proofed containers and provide them to, uh, citizens who need them and, uh, there's, it should be either financed by the town or financed by Timberline, not by the individual homeowners. Because it's a situation that we lived with. It's being aggravated by the type of containers that Timberline has provided. So I feel it's a big responsibility to that company to provide bear-proofed containers to the, this town in our situation, so.
I agree one hundred percent, Frank, that the, the citizens of the town shouldn't have to pay for it. Uh, that was the reason why I suggested this with, with Timberline, but I don't care how we accomplish it. I, I don't think that that burden should be put on the people in town.
Me neither, and that, that, I, that's the point I made before is that either way, there's the, the town, either Timberline or the town is picking it up. Or a combination of the two in partnership is picking it up. If we agree to, uh, to hold the tonnage fee at the current level for a, a certain amount of time, the townspeople will not have to, um, pay anything. I mean, other than, you know, perhaps a reduced, uh, income, but if we buy the, the cans, which is fine, I, I agree, that's another, that's certainly, you know, okay. But if we buy the cans and raise the, I, we're kind of balancing each other out, I think. If we raise the tonnage and we buy the cans, the tonnage fee will pay for the cans. If we buy the cans and, or if they provide the cans, either way, you know, we've provided something that's necessary to both our Yumine and Ursine residents to preclude negative interaction between the two species which should live in harmony and peace and sing kumbaya on New Year's Eve.
I agree. And think it's a dynamic conversation and we just need to not drop the ball.
Yep, I agree.
Yep.
All right, well, I'll, I'll keep on top of it with Timberline and get an answer from them as soon as I can and we'll go from there.
Okay, so yeah, whatever we do is fine with me too, as long as that, that whole concept of people.
Let's keep doing it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, let's move on. Sasha, you got the next two. Um, I did, I do wanna mention one thing before you get started though, on that incident response team and, and food distribution day. Um, I had a discussion with TJ, um, this morning about, um, grant opportunities and funding opportunities provided by the dreaded virus. And he sent me a list of, of things that are out there available right now. Um, and to be honest with you, I got it just before the meeting started and didn't have a chance to look at it. Uh, when I do, I'll, I'll either send that out or, or send out an email in what he, what he says. Um, but I'd like to try and get him to take advantage of any of that kind of money that's out there. And he said that the food distribution and the incident response team were things that were easy to get grants for, so hopefully we've got some funding possibilities there.
Uh, yeah, we absolutely do, Sam. And, um, as far as the food distribution and the incident response team, one of the major ways that we can get additional funding is through tracking volunteer hours for the town uh, for these two operations, not for the town. Um, and so I have been doing that with the food distribution, um, 'cause each hour of volunteerism is actual dollars, um, that can be used for different grant writing purposes. Um, and the same with the instant, incidents response team, the more that we can show that we're prepared, the more willing to give us financial aid, um, with those projects. Um, so I'm glad you talked to TJ about it and it is something that I've been looking at as well.
Hey, Sasha, Sarah here. Do you have a, a way to sort of track on and organize that input or, or would that be something that would be helpful for the town to support you on?
Um, the way that I'm doing it right now is using a program that works with QuickBooks.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
So hopefully we can, um, right now I'm doing it on the program that I've paid for. Um, but it, easy add-on that is not too expensive and we can use that to track both volunteer and employee hours at some point if we wanted, but that's a separate discussion.
Okay.
Uh, but that's, that's called timesheets.
Gotcha. That's great.
Super user-friendly and easily managed.
Yeah, no, that's super, Sasha, and, and maybe offline, um, it may make sense to, for that to be a town function.
Yeah.
And which Tammy might be able to help us with.
Yeah, um, this is just sort of the trial run of seeing how it works for this.
Yeah, excellent. Well, good to know. I've got QuickBooks as well. I could, I, I'll look into that. Anyway, sorry, off the topic.
Um, so anyway, our food distribution day is still Tuesdays from ten to two. Uh, we're actually gonna start getting our d- food deliveries on Tuesday at ten instead of on Monday.
Yes.
So any. Any, um, extra volunteers we could get right around nine thirty, ten to get stuff set up for people would be greatly appreciated. Um, but things are, I mean, people need stuff. There were a couple of things that came up, um, with Tina last week. Uh, one of the things the county is working on is trying to buy car seats and they're thinking two per town. If we know of anybody that could benefit from that, um, the people that have come in so far at, we all kind of have little kids the same age and then really little. So, um, if everybody on the board could just put their feelers out, um, so we can take advantage of that offering and not miss out if there's somebody in our community that needs it. Um, but otherwise the food distribution is going well. People are coming in. Um, I don't know, Marty, we had about probably ten families and ten individuals.
Yeah, I would say a total of what, between twenty and thirty people total, you know, bodies in there, uh.
And a couple of people were grabbing for, for families of four or five or six.
Yeah, right.
So.
Right.
Um, so the need is still there for us.
Oh, absolutely. And it's, uh, the response has gone really well and I'd like to somehow, when this is, at the appropriate time, thank the citizens who are availing themselves of the food bank because, um, this week I gave just under three hundred dollars for the advocates, which people have donated during the, uh, food bank. So that's something that shows, uh, just a sense of community that is really wonderful.
Yeah, um, we've, we've been asking people, um, even if you are financially able, come by at two o'clock when we're pretty much done and take what you need, avoid a trip to the store. Um, and people have been leaving donations and we talked to both T- um, Tina and Troy.
Yep.
Might be the wrong name? No, right name?
No, it's the right name.
And they said that they're doing all of this through grant money um, and asked that we donate the money elsewhere. And the advocates particularly at a time when people are being, um, forced to stay at home are experiencing higher volumes. Um, so Marty felt that that was an appropriate way to direct those donations and, um.
Well, Kelly.
That that's where it's going. And also the fire chief recommended.
Yeah, we offered it to them.
Money go that direction.
And he's told, he advised that that would be great for him.
So.
So to give it to the advocates.
Um, so yeah, that's it for food distribution day. If anybody can volunteer tomorrow.
I'll try to be by, far around nine thirty.
That'd be awesome, Chris. Thanks.
Great, great, update work.
No, it's, it's starting next week. That day will be delivering at ten. We had a delivery today.
Next week before I show up, man.
I know. We knew that.
You could go anyway.
You'll be on it, Chris. You'll be ahead.
I'll be there.
Yeah, well, no, we, we.
I'm never gonna ahead, boy.
Okay.
As long as you agree to listen to Sasha when setting up, because she has a system down that is magnificent.
I will listen to Sasha and I even have a mask, so we're good to go.
Good.
All right. Um, incident response team, um, still assembling the citizen list and, uh, this next week I am going to be talking to Tom Canlin. Um, he doesn't know that yet, but I will. I'm gonna call.
I think he's here. His name is on the screen.
It's either him or Jody. I don't know. Uh, but to, uh, talk about what we've done before and try and, um, oh, I got a heart. Yeah, it must be Jody.
It's Jody.
Yeah.
Jody. Hi, Jody.
You know, that's Jody.
To, uh, 'cause I know that we had a good plan before. Um, and if anybody is qualified, it's them to help us sort of get that back on track once we have our, um, at-risk citizens sort of quantified and all that. Oh, Tom's cute too.
Thank you, Tom.
Hi, Tom.
Uh, and, uh, go from there. The stuff from the county has proven pretty vague and we're just working with it and trying to figure it out.
If you do wanna include something like an incident command system i- in the plan, let me know.
I'm chief commander.
No, that's fine, but how many people you got you're supposed to super, you know, I mean, it's a whole.
We know that, Sasha.
Yes.
We already all know that.
Sasha can bless everyone.
We can get Sasha a bed.
Yeah.
Anyone that can live through this with four kids, I mean, they've got it.
Yeah, wow. That's very impressive.
Anyway, so that's all I've got on that. Um, we're just working on it piece by piece. Anyway, so that's all I've got on that. Um, we're just working on it piece by piece.
And I rephrased that, five kids.
Okay, is that all you guys, Sasha?
Yeah, that's it.
I forgot something in the trash thing. He asked for a list of everyone who needs pickup to be provided to him if they don't have it. So he just asked for that, so I forgot to relay that before.
Okay.
That was it.
Okay, Sam, it's you.
Okay, uh, next one is dinner part closure, um, for Marty. Um, I just wanna pass something on to everybody before we turn that over to Marty. Um, I was in a meeting today with the county commissioners, and they expressed their appreciation for the letter that we sent them and said that we was the only town in the county that showed appreciation or, or support for the county road closure.
Well, that, that's.
So it's all you, Marty.
It's all you, Marty.
Okay, well, I spoke to the sheriff about, um, will they assist if we have serious violations of our municipal road closures? And putting up those little stickers that were set by order of the town board was something that he said would enable them to respond, uh, without any who caused. So that's pretty much, that, you know, that's pretty much it. We sent that letter out thanking, um, those who we were grateful for, for the town, the commissioners and the, you know, everyone about closing the county roads. Um, and I don't know what the hell I was gonna say about parking. So we can completely forget about that, uh.
Well, Marty, Marty, before you leave parking, uh, where the Silver, Silver Plume Railroad Station will not be being used this summer, then in actuality, we had a, that whole stretch of mountain street that has been used for train parking could be available for public parking, and that keep, um, if we put out some signs or something, that would keep, uh, a lot of the public parking off the rest of the town streets. So fact of that.
The dust, which is really good. Yeah, no, that's excellent. Unless we encourage everybody to go outside and pee on the streets to keep the dust down. That's the other option. So I think that idea is a lot better.
They do that anyway down there, so.
I'm really glad I lived on the paved road and, or the only paved road in town.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Okay, the next, next thing is short-term rental regulations.
Hold, hold, hold on, Sam.
Okay.
This Tammy.
We generally turn on, hello?
Hello.
Okay. Uh, if I could just let you, let the dust settle and then let's talk about the park. Uh, this is the time of year when we go get the water turned on to the bathrooms at the park. And this year, the museum is not gonna be opening, according to Judy Caldwell. And she is not going to be taking care of the bathrooms. So we need to decide if you want us to get the water on. In case there's problems with the water, we need to kinda start now so we can get parts if we need them. And then we need to decide, uh, they need to be opened around noon and closed around five, and they need to be checked, and they need to be cleaned, and the, the trash will need to be emptied. So are we going to open the park for Memorial Day? Or are we going to leave that, uh, in a state of non-open to the public until further notice?
We're gonna open the park for Memorial Day, and I will take care of getting the restrooms taken care of.
Did the other restroom ever get fixed last year? We only have one side of that working, correct?
No.
I think we got both sides fixed. Uh, Judy Caldwell was opening them and cleaning them. And she's opened both of them for events and busy weekends, but we kept one of them clean and closed in case we had a problem, uh, as we normally do with sewer overflow on heavy weekends. So we could just use the other one while the other one was being fixed.
No, it's fine now, cuz.
We'll get the water on and we'll get it working and prepare to open it.
Okay. All right, are, are we done there now?
My only cautionary note there, Sam, is don't, you know, make sure you don't take on too much. And we as a town need to take care of, you know, taking care of those restrooms if we need to, so.
I mean, I wouldn't be against.
It'll be taken care of, um, I'm, I'm gonna delegate.
Okay.
All right.
I wanna be against for this weekend, maybe just putting out some porta potties from Timberline? And by make it easier on everybody without having to fire up that bathroom and everything else.
Well, are we gonna do this too before we lift our town traffic signs? Because that's gonna make more traffic into the park.
Yeah, so maybe we shouldn't turn them on yet, and if you do wanna open it for Memorial Day weekend, we'll just have a couple porta potties set there and all the way after that. That way we don't have to worry about the bathrooms until we figure out exactly what we wanna do.
Exactly.
We can get, we can get them turned on and get them working, and then we can put them on hold and
Yep.
figure out some signage so people know they're still closed.
And if they'll pay attention to sign, we can, maybe we can put, you know, something running through the electric socket to the doorknob when they're officially closed.
They'll just use the park if they're closed.
That's a good point.
That's what I mean.
But the porta potties are good, a good idea.
We can put a sign up actually that just says, "Visit the bathrooms at the Green Solution, and thank you for your cooperation."
That's just my suggestion.
They're very clean, and they've been open all winter. I, I have to say that they are a very valuable resource, having a, having a bathroom to send people to. So I'll make up a sign to put on the park doors.
Well, I would agree with the porta potties, but I would agree not opening or getting the porta potties until after we lift our signs that say the streets are closed to the public.
Right.
Yep.
I all that. I just also wanna make sure that we're still in line with the county.
Correct.
If the bathrooms in Idaho Springs and Georgetown are closed, I think that we need to, to stay in with what the county is doing.
I agree. I agree.
I agree.
Idaho Springs bathrooms are still closed as of right now.
Yeah, it was down at the park.
Well, the Georgetown Visitor Center is still closed, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I would like to hold off on opening them unless, I mean, I don't know. I don't think it's a big idea right now.
Yeah, I don't either.
We open them.
I don't think they need to be on. The porta potties are a good idea, but I don't know whether, I don't, I don't think we can stop people from, even if with the road signs on, I don't think we can stop people, uh, from being hu- being human and not listening to anything but their own bladders.
But right now, why do we have any need to open up in town? I mean, we don't have any restaurants or anything that are open in town.
No.
I don't think we need to let people come into town. Why should we even open up the bathrooms in the park or even remove the signs at this point?
I agree.
Well, I think.
I agree with Sasha.
I agree, but I also do agree that the plumbing needs to be checked.
Absolutely. I gotta just check the plumbing.
And we should take care of that, but not of bathrooms.
And just not open.
Okay.
I totally agree.
Unlocked.
My plumbing is blind.
Well, what did we do to decide about the porta potties? Do we wanna put in porta potty or not?
Not yet, no.
No, okay. Okay.
It's not doing any bathrooms in town. There's the Green Solution bathroom that's provided if somebody really needs one.
Key on my house and I'll shoot you.
I run people out all the time. Nobody uses my bathroom.
Kay, mayor.
Let's go.
All right, um, short-term rental regulations. I'm not gonna spend too much time on this so we can move on. Um, I've done pretty good research on other towns' regulations. I had a pretty good talk with, uh, police judge or mayor of Georgetown on Saturday, and we discussed their, their regulations quite a bit. Um, I'm putting all that together, um, to share with Rick Caldwell, and he's gonna help me write something up to present to the board, um, to give us a starting point for discussions. Um, there's not much sense going into it until that part's done, and then we can open it for discussion after that, but I am working on it. So.
Good stuff.
All right.
Thank you, Sam.
Next one is Chris for building code update.
So I'm working with Kelly right now. Well, we should have a rough draft to send out by the end of the week of what we wanna implement. Uh, it'll be the two thousand eighteen building code, and it'll be a residential version, and there'll be a commercial version, and then it'll just go open for discussion as far as I'm concerned. There's not much to it besides adopting a two thousand eighteen building code. It's just whether, what, what we wanna do and if we wanna add anything to it, or if we wanna take anything away from it. So I'm sticking with Kelly pretty heavy on all the commercial end. He doesn't have much on the residential end, but he's got a lot on the commercial end. I'd really like to stick with what he advises that we do, and it's what everybody else is doing in the county as well. So I will send that out as soon as it's ready.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Neat.
Good.
Is it me?
Sasha.
You.
It's me. Um, so, um, I think everybody got my email that I sent. Um, I don't, this is partially public comment. Um, so of course I recuse myself from any decision-making. Um, but, um, as I said in my email, um, I, John and I are remodeling the house at five four five Woodward, Verona's house at five 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 Woodward. Their water shut-off valve is in the middle of our driveway. And in the course of construction, or we're not even sure, it happened Saturday, I think. Um, somebody hit the cover for the shut-off valve, tweaked it, and turned off the water to five five five. Um, I've spoken to Jean Zimmerman, who is the current owner of the property, and was told that it was up for sale. It's actually under contract by a couple, um, their names are John and Mickey. And they have asked in the preliminary discussions about this that I just presented to you, um, they are both not hearing. And Zoom conferences aren't exactly set up for ill-deaf people at this point. Um, but I'm sharing all emails that happened between me and the town with them regarding this matter. Um, they are planning on closing on the house on June first. Um, the questions that we have are, um, that the water line and shut-off for one property are placed on another person's property. And if it's the town's responsibility to relocate that shut-off, um, and if because from, I hope everybody read that email. I don't wanna just say all the same stuff. Um, from what it sounds like, it was improperly put in initially during the water project. A poor fix was done a year ago, and now there's two new property owners with a shared issue. And where the town's responsibility lies in that. And I, I read through Colorado ordinance on the topic, and it pretty much says that the town is not. Um, but none of those ordinances speak specifically to having done a redo of a water system for a town and things being improperly placed at that time. So I would ask that the board perhaps put it to Barbara Green um, and see what her comments are on it. And even if it doesn't come to any financial difference for myself or my new neighbors, um, I can't imagine that we are the only two properties that are gonna come across this issue. And so as a board member, I feel it's, um, very important that we know how we're gonna address this going forward. And as a citizen, I want somebody else to pay for it.
I believe that it's gonna be the homeowner's problem who runs from the curb going that way, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. I don't know if that exact problem is in our ordinance. I know that, you know, if you have a break on your own line, you're responsible for digging and fixing it, but I don't know about relocation.
But the, the main thing is that the shut-off is the town's, the shut-off is the town's.
Not in our ordinance anymore, so the shut-off, that's the curb valve that's in between. So the shut-off that's on the main itself is the town's responsibility. But the shut-off that's in between the main and the house, that is the homeowner's responsibility. So the homeowner's actually responsible for the whole line from the main to the house.
Right.
Or ordinance. So the town has nothing to do with any of that.
Right.
That curb stop is actually the homeowner's problem.
Right.
Yeah.
Um.
Hey, Tay, Tay's been sitting there with her hand up for a while. Give her a dance.
Um, I think with that proposal, this is a public comment too, not invited, just the, um, the cases that come before the board, before damages done to private property with that project and those installations were done incorrect, and they were remanded to be paid for by the homeowner at, at other board meetings, so. Um.
Pres- precedent.
Sorry, Tay, I missed part of what you said cuz my headset went out.
Well, I just said, um, there were some other residences that had damage to their personal property and as well as damaged infrastructure that happened in that water installation project. And they came to the board to have that damage resolved much like this. And, and the precedent was set that it was remanded that the homeowner have to pay for it.
I, I understand that. I was also one of those homeowners whose property and home was damaged when it happened the first time. Um, but part of the issue and what the person, um, Banky Blackmore, who was called to dig it up, who has redone several pieces of this around town, um, part of what he said is that there's a concern that both stops are tied to the main in one spot. Both shut-offs are wiring out essentially.
Oh. Jim Noble.
And therein ties the town and the homeowners into a little bit of a mess.
Yes, it does.
Uh, I mean, what that, what might happen in that case is the town would dig up the corp stop and lay the, and reattach it to the main, and then some of the digging would have to be, and, and the rest of it would be paid for by the homeowner.
Yeah. Yeah, no, absolutely. Um, it's just that that was one of the problems that were addressed, that perhaps the larger issue is where it's the mi- the stops connecting to the main. Um, but also, as I said in the email, the homeowners are supposed to close, the current renters, soon-to-be homeowners, are supposed to close on the first of May.
June.
So if, June, thank you, Marty, if we could, uh, please put this for, um, quicker consideration to Barbara and other bodies, um, I as a resident property owner would appreciate it, and I think that it would behoove this as a board as well. That's all I gotta say.
They're a really nice family. They really are. They're really a delightful family.
Yeah, Sam wants to interject here.
Um, Sarah and I discussed this a little bit before the meeting, and, um, we're gonna get ahold of Barbara and Joe here in the next day or two and get their opinion on responsibility and, and that. And once we. responsibility and, and that. And once we get their opinion, then we'll figure out what we can or can't do.
I agree with that.
That's all I'm asking. Thanks.
Sounds good.
What's that?
That's all she's asking. She said, thanks.
So you're gonna bring that up to her pretty quick, Sam?
Yep, sounds good.
Awesome. I like it.
All right, um. That's the last item under the action agenda. Um, mayor and committee reports, um, we don't have any committees right now to report. Um. I think the, the only thing that I had to report, um, I sent out in, in the email that I sent out the other day with the exception of one or two things. Um, I've, I told you I had a meeting with TJ this morning. Um, the other thing that I discussed with him, um, is the aging water, water meters and or need to replace them. Um, I asked him to try and find us funding for that, grants or, or whatever. Um, I feel very strongly that especially with the COVID situation and all that, the cost of replacing water meters would put a burden on the homeowners and I would like for us to find a, another way to fund that. So we don't have to pass that cost on to the homeowners. And he's going to research that for me and get back with me. He thinks that there is money out there available to to take care of that, so hopefully we can get that addressed. What I'd like to do is if, if we can get a grant to fund that, I'd like to get it set up where we just do it all in one shot, replace all of the water meters and. Um.
That would be really cool.
That's my head.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
I like it.
Well, I would like to approve the minutes of April twenty-seventh.
Hold on, Chris.
Away you go.
Too soon.
Too soon.
I'm sorry. Administrative items always goes by so silently, but I did receive something today that requires you to just know that you received it. Um. I know it's a silly thing, but uh remember when you, a couple meetings ago, maybe the new board wasn't seated yet, but we approved a change of beneficial ownership for the, uh, Green Solution, who is now being owned by Compassionate Care Company.
Mm-hmm.
And all of that went through and got approved. We received a copyback from the state and now they have submitted an uh change of executive officer to compassionate care. It is less of a change in ownership. Uh, it's just a replacement of executive officer. So it does not fall under our ten percent uh that triggers your uh public hearing like the last change. Uh, and the state has already approved it. This board simply needs to acknowledge the receipt of the information. So.
Acknowledge.
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 Thank you. I will send you a copy of it in the morning.
Don't, no, you don't have to send me a copy. Don't send me a copy.
If anyone wants to see it, it's in the office.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for you, Tammy.
Okay.
Last year, C-Dot agreed to do the broken yellow line letting knuckleheads pass in a quarter of a mile worth of twenty-five mile an hour zone. They agreed to turn the dotted line into a continuous line and make it a specified no-passing zone. Have we heard anything since we were about to?
You know what? That's so funny you would mention that because between Wednesday and Thursday last week, they striped the exit ramp westbound into Silver Plume. So I have a call in Chris Robbins and an email to get, I don't care what they have to do to get a paint truck back up here.
Yes, thank you.
So yes, I will, I will let you know how that comes out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to the minutes.
Okay.
Now, Chris.
We have a mo- uh, motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Um, staff updates, um. Tay, do you have anything to add to what's already been said? We had a discussion about the signs and everything else. Um, do you have anything to add?
No, except, um, I was fleshing out some of the items for the meter replacement program, so uh, maybe something that if you're working with TJ on that, something that might be helpful is a cost estimate of the parts that have to go in um in order for us to be up to code now and so I can just work with you on that in the future going forward.
Okay. All right, Tammy, do you have anything to report?
No, I covered everything during the meeting. Thank you. Unless you have any questions.
All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I.
No move.
Oh, I second. Sarah second.
All right. Any opposed?
Hell no.
All right.
Thanks, Sam.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tay.
Bye.
Bye.
How are you feeling, Tay? Any better?
It's okay, but better, yes, thank you.
Oh, have a good night.
You too.